We have to start the recorder or is it going on there? TV guy, I hear you. No, it's the TV.
I have no idea how that operates.
We'll see where she's at.
That's Chuck, I'm back there. Chuck, you're running the controls tonight for us here?
Yeah, yeah.
Recorder's gone, sorry.
Yeah, it should be. Can you see, Chucky, is it going? Is it recording? Is it recording?
Yeah.
Yeah. Today we welcome to the regular city council meeting of December 7th, 2015. 7:36, we'll call the meeting to order. We do have a forum, let's please stand and pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approve all the agenda. Approve all items posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Here on place all agenda items on the table for discussion with the addition of I allow displayed city parks. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, we have some corrections to make to the agenda. On pages one and two, the meeting date says November 16th, 2016. That should be corrected to 2015 in both of those sections. And then in my budget presentation in page nine, on the very first slide, where it says this total is 1,736,000, that should say 1,776,000. And then I believe, Mr. Kim, you had some additions too?
Just a, I just had the metal, so that's it.
Okay.
And they picked out the way I was.
Okay.
What's the wish of the council on the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the corrections.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Alderman Hercock, for approval of the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda's adopted. Approval of the minutes. Copy of the minutes for special work session meeting, November 16th, 2015. The regular meeting and the work session are enclosed. What's the wish of the council on them?
Hope to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Knopfler and second by Councilman Eldren. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Approval of the bills, approved checks number 93099 through 93187, total of $250,000, 847.91. Mr. Gushak?
Page one, please.
I have a question on page one. One thing I've noticed over the past few months is I see a lot of entries for Automac sales and service and I'm not saying anything about their work, but I'm curious as to why, or do we look to spread that around a little bit?
We do, we try and do business with as many of the repair people in town as we can. Sometimes, especially on the squad cars, we use parts from our old squad cars to repair the new squad cars and the old squads sit out at Automac, so depending on the repairs, we take them out there so that they can, you know, replace with parts that we have off of our old squad.
Okay, I did talk to a mechanic today and he's never been approached to do any work and then readily admitted he hasn't sorted out either, but so it's just something I've noticed and I'd like to see us give some business to the businesses that are paying our property tax. Thank you.
I was looking at the library, Modern Sewer for October, it's 4242 and right below it says, Modern Sewer, 38999. What's, why is there?
The second one is for the sprinkler. It's a summer service, it only gets built once a year. So that's for the sprinkler at the library.
I was thinking that was November's bill and I was wondering why such a big difference?
Sprinkler.
Any more on page one? Page two? Page three? Page four?
New squads all ready and ready to go?
It is, we are waiting to have the squad camera system installed. The rest of us is sitting out here in front of us.
Page five? Page six? Totals are on page seven. I make a motion to approve the bills at 250,947.91.
I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Hanson, for approval of the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bills are approved. Awards, donations, presentations, proclamations, proclamations, support of law enforcement. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. There was a question about the timing on this proclamation and I realize that there's some issues going on nationwide that are not palatable to a lot of people or myself, but this was a request made to me two to three months ago by a couple of councilmen and I decided to move forward with it. Also in questioning the timing, I'm sure an issue is possibly in the fifth paragraph where it asks for a support of all law enforcement. I will tell you that if there's any law enforcement in my mind that are not obeying the law, that is not what we're saying and people are trying to mince the words and make it say what they want. And in the second to last paragraph, it speaks of our support for all officers and that is in this community. Couple other things that spurred this is I know it was, I was at the courthouse when Sheriff Larson did the remembrance of the killing of the sheriff and the deputy, I believe it was 50 years ago. It was in extremely emotional way and it's a dangerous position, so that's another reason for this timing. And also I believe Officer Decker, there was recently the anniversary of his death, so with those caveats, of course those things may not be recorded because you pick and choose what you want, but I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the term law enforcement official describes individuals and agencies responsible for enforcing laws and maintaining public order and public safety, including the prevention, detection, and investigation of crime and the apprehension and detention of individuals suspected of law violations. And whereas, the men and women of our nation's law enforcement agencies wear their uniforms with honor, dedication, and integrity as they protect and serve their communities. And whereas, each day, 780,000 police officers across our country put on a badge and go to work knowing they may face extremely dangerous situation. On average, between 105 and 203 officers die in the line of duty each year. 50,000 officers are assaulted in the line of duty each year and 14,000 officers are injured in the line of duty each year. And whereas, law enforcement officers play such an integral part in our society and they are the guardians of our way of life and they deserve our support. Now therefore, be it known to all that I, Mayor Gregory J. Zelka, on behalf of the city council of the city of Little Falls, Morrison County, Minnesota, clearly state and underscore our support of law enforcement personnel throughout the United States, but especially our local Little Falls Police Department, Morrison County Sheriff's Department, Minnesota State Patrol, and conservation officers. Be it further known that we believe law enforcement handles their duties with the utmost professionalism and we have full faith and confidence in these brave men and women to serve and protect our community. And be it further known that we further call upon all citizens to take the time to show their support of law enforcement officials dated this 7th day of December, 2015. And I do have copies for the four branches that I'd like to present this evening and I would like to have Chief Shermer introduce each one and come up for a picture for the record to take and I would also entertain comments before we do that of the city council on this proclamation.
Yes, I would like to commend our Mayor Zelka for presenting this proclamation. I was not one of those who suggested it be done, I wish I had been. But it's a case where another thing with this, a proclamation does not have to be voted on. I kind of wish it were because I would not merely vote yes. It would be a wholehearted enthusiastic resounding yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, officers, for all that you do for us and protecting us, the things that you have to go through that people shouldn't have to go through and for the things your families go through as well. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you that fall under this proclamation for all the hard work you do that we don't always realize how much work you really do, but we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
I would just add that I know many of you personally, you're not only great officers, but you're good people and I appreciate everything you do.
I'd like to thank you guys for taking time out of your night to come and receive this proclamation and thank you for all your support and work you do out in the field to keep us all safe here and our families. Thank you.
It takes a special type of person to run to the sound of danger and I'm confident that we have several folks in here that will do that and I appreciate that mentality. Thank you.
Right now, it's not popular because of the media, what's going across the country and I don't like the idea that every officer is being blamed for the actions of a few. But I'm proud to say our officers are beneficial and because you're all here tonight, I feel a whole lot safer. And you're doing a good job and I compliment you for it.
And after all of that, what can I say except I agree with every other member on this board. Myself and my family feel much safer living here in Little Falls, knowing what you people do every day, reading in the paper what you face, what you go through. You have my sincere gratitude and my sincere thanks for what you do for us and for our community.
If you guys want to report, I'll introduce each of you to the prepared council. I just would like to thank everybody too. It's a pleasure to be the chief here of Little Falls. Have unbelievable staff that do an amazing job. We work with some outstanding agencies, Morrison County Sheriff's Office, Minnesota DNR, Minnesota State Patrol, and the other agencies here in Morrison County as well. Officer Jeremy Dora, Officer Charlie Stock, Officer Josh Andrea, Chief Deputy Jason Worley, Sheriff Sean Larson, Sergeant John Ruby, Conservation Officer Joyce Cuskey, and Sam Kaplan with Minnesota State Patrol.
Thank you very much. I have proclamations and they're not specified. This one, Ken.
Senator, did you get it?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much. Thanks for coming, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda, 2016 on sale, and on sale Sunday, off sale, tobacco and miscellaneous license approved. Animal control report, November 2015, received. Community service advisory committee minutes, September 2015, received. Energy and environmental committee minutes, November 2015, received. What's the wish of the council on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve and receive the items from the consent agenda. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Knopfler, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lightings, public hearing, budget public hearing meeting. It is 7:52, open a public hearing. Got the affidavit on file, public hearing, affidavit of publication.
There isn't one required because it's a public meeting, not a public meetings.
Okay, public meeting. This was announced in the truth and taxation statement that was delivered out in the, about a month ago or a few weeks ago by the county, acknowledging what the preliminary levy rating, rate was for taxes, so that's what people saw for their tax rates. I am pleased to present tonight that we are not at the 4.99% that was approved at the preliminary meeting. We're actually at an amount that's closer to 1% for a tax rate increase. However, that's up to the council to make some final changes if they wanted to see that rate go up or down. But staff, this is what we're prepared to present. So in the tax levy, we have, is made up of a number of different expenses from administration to transfers out that we make for our parks, our police department, our streets and public works. All of those things go into a total general fund that also has revenue streams from different sources, a local government aid being a primary funder, but then the tax levy is the other major revenue source. But we also have our fees and fines, the permit fees that we have for other things. So once you add up all of the expenses, deduct out those revenues that you're already going to get, the difference, what you need to make up is what you need to put into towards your tax levy. Other components that make up the tax levy that our residents pay are debt service that we've pledged to be paid back from general fund obligations. And then there's a couple other components, being Fire Relief Association, Economic Development Authority, and parking improvements that were designated funds directly out of the levy to include. So you can see there's different components of what that total makes up. We're at 1,776,000 for the remainder of the general fund expenses to be paid out of the levy. We have 1,659,500 for debt service and 111,000 in those other three categories. So when you look at a chart breaking down where those revenue sources go to pay, 50% of it's going to pay for the general fund, the other 45 is debt service and the other are some special items that were also designated. So there's a referendum levy and a certificate of indebtedness that I was counting in the debt service total. So looking at the balance of what we get in revenue and what we expend for those general fund expenditures that aren't included in the debt service, 50% of the revenue that we have to fund general fund operations comes from local government aid. Local government aid is a fund that the state delivers to cities in twice a year, in July and December. It's a huge component, it's been in place since 1971. There are hundreds of cities that receive local government aid. It's based on a formula calculation that's been revised over the years, but comes and figures out different need factors that every city probably has, some of them being some population growth, some being on older housing. But either way, the formula comes up with what every city would receive out of the total pot of money that's usually approved in the tax omnibus bill that the state, that the legislature approves every two years. However, this year was a tax year and the state did not approve an omnibus tax bill. So if they don't approve a tax bill, that doesn't mean that the funds go away or we can't operate local governments. Everything just stays as it was approved in the previous tax bill. So we don't receive an increase or a decrease different from what was previously established. So there's a modest increase from this year to next year and another modest increase from next year to 2017. However, there were bills on the floor, one that was supporting a $45 million increase to local government aid, which would have restored it back to the 2002 levels, which were the highest of the actual paid out local government aid that the state of Minnesota has ever had. So that would have helped us tremendously. In cities, the best resource for businesses to receive any sort of property tax break is likely going to come from local government. There aren't any, you know, market value homestead exclusions for business operators. There isn't a state exclusion for their property taxes, they have to pay a property tax levy as well. So when the state delivers local government aid to communities, it's to do what it is that they feel is best. They can use it for operating funds, they can use it for property tax relief. There's no specific thing that they say that local government aid has to be spent for. It just has to be spent by your city for general fund purposes. So if you're using that increase, if we were to get another $100,000 from local government aid, we would be able to say, well, instead of spending that $100,000, we're just going to lower the levy $100,000 and save everybody in property taxes. And, you know, a huge benefactor to that are going to be your local businesses and industrial properties. So in comparing this year to next year, the increase in the levy requirement to pay for the funds is about a 9.1% increase in what we've come up with that staff for recommendation. The change in the overall tax rate, however, is a reduction. And I'll explain why. There is a, when they calculate taxes in the state of Minnesota, they do so figuring out what all the market value of property is in town, what the different classifications are for rates. Like I said, there's different classification for residential homesteaded properties, there's different classification for commercial properties, above and below a certain number. And then that adds, that gives you what's called the total net tax capacity, the NTC. So for the preliminary estimate for the NTC for 2016 is $4,707,656 and that's actually an increase of what it was from the previous year. So if you take what you need to levy to pay your debts, to pay for your operating expenses, for everything else that levy funds are going to be used for, and you divide that by the NTC, that's what gives you your tax rate. So this year, if you take what we were presenting at that 9.1% increase of total expense and divide that by the net tax capacity, the rate goes to 72.977%. In 2015, at this time, that rate was 76.382%. And when you actually calculated out the preliminary levy that went into the truth and taxation statement, that rate would have been 74.867%. So while we are increasing our total expenses, the tax rate that people would see if their property valuation stayed the same would be a decrease. It would be a decrease of 1.89% from the preliminary statement and a decrease of 3.405% from the previous year. So if your valuation stayed the same, which it doesn't always do, some go up and some go down, you would see a decrease. So in comparing what that means for properties, if the valuation stayed at $100,000 for a residential homesteaded property, in 2015, they likely paid $548 in city taxes, in 2016, they would have paid $524 in city taxes. So this doesn't include all the school taxes, the county's taxes, and the other special revenues that are included in the entire tax statement, so you wouldn't see it on the total final bill. This would just be in the line that says city taxes. So that's what for homesteads. So you can see in the other classifications, there's some different factors that go into the values, but everybody, if their value stayed the same from this year to next year, they would see decreases. And the largest, some of our largest valuation in industrial property, you know, they would see a decrease around $2,000 in the total here. So now, looking at some of our history, in LGA, what we saw in 2007 until now, we, there was so much flux in the state because of deficits and other things that were going on. They lowered LGA, they raised it, and then they kept it flat. And then in 2013 and 14, they refixed, they fixed the formula and they approved and restored it back to kind of where it was. So what you seen was this number kind of jumping and then staying flat and then finally increasing and this is where we're steadily at. And then our tax rate over that time, you know, steadily decreased until 2010. Granted, the recession hit and our valuations changed a lot, but as this 2010 to 2013 local government aid stayed flat, our costs started going up, but our revenue sources from the state did not. The tax rate climbed, scattered up again. And another factor in there is some property tax exclusion, which probably accounts for this huge 18% increase a lot. But we're finally starting to see now that local government aid going up, our tax rates actually going down. So as long as people's valuations were to stay the same, if they weren't increasing at a dramatic rate, they're likely to see the property taxes going down. So, you know, this is a very strong argument that, you know, I have another resolution in here supporting local government aid that we've, I'd asked that we sent to our state officials. It's vastly important for the city of Little Falls to have that revenue resource and to get it from the state and spend it placements 1971 and it's a huge, huge benefit to greater Minnesota city. So I'd say that I'd be encouraging us to support that moving forward. So another graph, and this is, you know, kind of the doom and gloom factor. If LGA just went away tomorrow, you know, that $524 amount that I presented would jump up to $922 if all we did was supplement what we lost in local government aid with property taxes. If we cut 50% of our expenses from some areas that are coming out of the general fund, you know, general fund includes streets, police, parks, administration. If we cut 50% of those expenses out and then made up the rest in tax increases, we'd still be raising the taxes for people. So take out 50% of the services that you're providing to the residents and add their taxes, it'd be a huge loss. That said, we hope that local government aid doesn't go away, but there are people in the legislature that have said they want to get rid of it because they're from jurisdictions that don't have it. And those are usually wealthy suburban areas of the metro that really, they have 25% tax rates and they don't need it. This is a major factor for city value. So, you know, the worst being, you look at that $3 million valued property, they would see 34,000. So, you know, the worst being, you look at that three million dollar valued property, they would see thirty-four thousand dollar increase. How are we gonna be attracting, you know, major industries to our community when, when that factor would, 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 if that was to hit us? If we were to try to provide the same services without that revenue? So it'd be, it's a huge, huge factor for us. So the, the rest is what I presented in the work session, talking about the, the water improvement. We have, you know, about ten million dollars of water improvement expenses that we have planned out for the next six years. Eleven million dollar major capital expense within the next five year, or about five years out in the waste plant. We really need to look at revenue streams to help cover those costs. And as I described, you know, we're looking at spreading things out between a base charge and a usage charge. The usage charge being on however many gallons you're actually utilizing water, you're taking out of your tap. And then the sewer charge in, in an estimated amount that you're sending back down the drain. So those would be paying for the operating expenses, your salaries, your utilities, your chemical costs, the things that you need to make the plant run from day to day. The base charges are gonna pay for your non-operating costs that I, I call them, as I call them. Those are your capital expenses and your existing and future debt service expenses that you would need for, to cover those costs. Right now, our operating revenues and expenses are very good. We're, we're usually in line and we're actually getting some surpluses in those. And we're taking them, those surpluses and then offsetting the deficits that we're, we're facing in the, on the non-operating side. So as you can see in the graph, when we get to this current projected year, we actually have some, this is with the rate increase. So what we'd be going from would be these blue, red, green, these are two thousand and four, thirteen, fourteen, what we're estimating for fifteen. With the rate increase, we're generating a significant amount of revenue. However, it still isn't even enough to cover what we're planning, planning for in expenses for twenty sixteen in the capital and existing debt service that we already have. So there's some other factors that we need to consider. So the other thing that we've been doing, when, when we don't have enough money to pay these operating expenses, we have an improvement fund for both water and sewer. In water, it's about one point six million dollars and sewer, it's about one point one million dollars. And they're very important that we keep those improvement funds at or around a million dollars of cash because they're utilized to help us offset expenses, major expenses throughout the year so that we have enough revenue to operate from month to month so that we can pay those, those bills. So it is, it's, it's a good tool to utilize when we run into, to shortfalls, but it's something that we don't wanna completely deplete over time. So this is why we're presenting these rates with the increases that we are over, over the course of the next five to fifteen years. So what we're looking at changing the water base rates is moving from what we currently have at twelve dollars and sixty-five cents per meter. This is the monthly charge that everybody receives on their utility bill, whether or not they have a one-inch meter, a five-eighth inch meter, which is the common residential meter, or an eight-inch meter, which is one, our, our highest meter size for highest volume water user. Currently, the ethanol plant. They pay twelve dollars and sixty-five cents whether they use five thousand gallons a month or five million gallons a month. That's what they pay. And right now, that revenue is not enough to sustain what we need in capital improvements and what we pay in debt service. Or what we're going to pay in future debt service. So what we're proposing is moving back to something that was actually in place in the nineties in Little Falls to a scaled rate structure with multipliers for various meter sizes. So it starts with a base multiplier one at thirteen twenty-five. And then as you go up, in the first few years, we're, we, we start scaling this up until we get to the point where in two thousand and nineteen, this is what the multipliers would be at, at the rate they would finish at. And then there would be an increase to this base charge of five percent moving forward every year. And that five percent number is shown later as being what you would need to sustain that improvement fund at or around a million dollars over the life of these expected expenses. So in year one, we're looking at a one point five percent multiplier to a one-inch meter, three, three times multiplier to an inch and a half meter, a five times multiplier to a two-inch meter, ten times multiplier to three, fifteen to a four, twenty to a five, twenty-five to a six and thirty to an eight. And then you can see the monthly base charges that each of those meters would pay. So we only have a few, you know, around a hundred, three to, three, four-inch and eight-inch meters or even less than a hundred. You know, and then we only have a couple of hundred in the one and two-inch meter. A vast majority of our water users are in the five-inch meter or they're apartments that already pay a base charge for each of those apartments. You know, there's, there's, apartments don't have a meter for each individual apartment, they have one large meter for the whole complex. We're not proposing to change that, we're proposing to leave that the same, that they pay based on the unit charge. That actually, that we are proposing a change to the mixed-use buildings. These are your downtown buildings that have, you know, business downstairs and apartments upstairs. Eliminating the multiplier to that and they go strictly to the, to the meter size charge. And what we found is that gets to be a little more fair for those businesses downtown because a lot of those times those upstairs apartments are not occupied. So this gives them, you know, they pay still pay a little bit higher rate, but in some cases, they might not be paying as much for, you know, a unit that isn't even being used, that somebody else is not occupying it. But it doesn't offset us, there aren't enough of those that are gonna push us into a, into a bad place revenue wise. So this is a graph showing the, you know, the different levels of, of revenue stream that we would get in, in the service charge, that base charge, and then the non-operating expenses over time as, as we're adding those capital improvements, that's ten million dollars in water fund. And then the balance of the improvement fund as the time progresses. So in the first few years, the improvement fund actually climbs. But what we, what is needed is to pay for those longer, longer-term debt service things and future capital improvements that are beyond five years out, that we really don't even know or can't even quantify at this time. And at some point, that, that number starts to dip. And then later, when you get into the years of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, that starts to climb back up again. You know, I'll show on a later graph what would happen if you only raised that base charge two percent, three percent, four percent. It really takes a five percent increase every single year to stabilize this improvement fund so that it never really dips below, maybe to into a position where you're at negative. And this is with scaling up those multipliers over time. So this is the starting scale of the multiplier. So you see in the early years, you know, as the multipliers are smaller, you know, one to thirty times. You, if we kept this the same, we would start to run into really troublesome times, you know, in the ten-year, ten-year out factor. Yes, at five percent, we're still maintaining a positive balance of the improvement reserve. But if anything less than five percent, it's a negative. So if you look at what the final scale of multipliers, if you applied that over the whole time, you actually get to a point where your, your improvement fund with a five percent increase to the base every year stays above a million dollars. If you didn't do that, you know, four percent would keep you positive, three and two percent, you'd end up negative. So this is a breakdown of the rates for the five-eighth, two-inch meters. And I'm sorry for the, the discrepancy in this, but the key factor here is that what you see in the, in the majority of users are actually in these smaller rates. These are in the, the red, green and purple, purple bars. Their base charge that they pay is gonna stay, you know, at that thirteen dollars. And by the time you, if you continue with that five percent increase, it actually doesn't get over, it doesn't go over thirty dollars a month. In my previous community in Madison, their base charge is actually seventeen dollars a month, it's going to eighteen dollars a month next month. Other communities have base charges of twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six dollars a month. So, you know, even over that time, I think there's still some capacity to ensure that you're generating enough revenue to pay for those operating and debt service costs that you're, you're gonna have take place over time. You know, and then in the other, as the meters get larger, of course, the rates go up more significantly. In fifteen years, you'd have a two-inch customer, metered size customer that would be paying over two hundred dollars a month. And then this is for the larger meters. You know, the scale starts at two hundred, moves up to sixteen hundred. You know, one, that one eight-inch customer, yes, they're paying, they're moving from twelve sixty-five right now immediately up to almost four hundred. By the time this five percent increase would continue and then with the increases in the multipliers, they're up over sixteen hundred dollars a month, almost eighteen hundred dollars a month. However, if you actually looked at what their component, what they use versus what this base charge is, it's, it's minuscule to what they actually use, what they're paying for in, in total water that they consume. You know, this customer uses five million gallons of water a month. That, and our, our rates are two dollars and sixties, oh, at that, it's two dollars and eighty cents per thousand gallons. You know, so that's tens and twenties of thousands of dollars a month that they're paying water they're actually utilizing. You know, this is a small percentage of their actual, with their actual budget when they look at it. Yes, it's gonna be something that's kind of painful in the, in the initial stages, but it's something that other communities are doing the same. And that certainly in thirteen, fifteen years, the eighteen hundred dollars is not gonna be out of line for what other communities are going to have to pay to maintain their water infrastructures and their water production, meeting the limits and regulations that the state is imposing for all those things. So, you know, it gets us into a position that we're financially feasible to handle kind of whatever is thrown at us over, over time. Going into wastewater, you know, we don't see the same impact in immediate expensive capital improvements like we are in, in water. We're looking at one to two million dollars a year in improvements in water that we hope to debt service. In wastewater, we're kind of holding off things for five years because we have existing debt in a lot, much larger capacity than what we currently have in water. We have over six hundred thousand dollars of existing debt that we're paying this coming year in the waste side, on the sewer side. But in the next five years, that scale, that drops off quite dramatically. We're actually closing out a lot of those, those existing debts. So by the time the fifth year comes around, we're gonna have the capacity to kind of go out for that larger project. And we have some facility plans in, in the works right now that we hope to get back soon, early parts of next year. They're gonna have, give us a better idea of what those improvements are gonna be, what we're gonna have to make. But right now, we, water, you know, I showed in the water, we're subsidizing a lot of operating revenue with the non-operating expenses. In wastewater and sewer, that, that number is even, even much larger, it's much more extreme. We're, we're collecting a lot more in operating revenue for wastewater than we are in actual cap, in the not, in the base charge and the non-operating revenue. So a lot of that goes to subsidize, but even the subsidy doesn't, isn't enough to pay for the existing debt service. And what we have been doing is taking out of that improvement fund to pay the difference. However, if we don't do anything now, that improvement fund's gonna be used up entirely within two to three years. So we're proposing moving the wastewater base charge from, right now, it's five dollars and fifty-five cents per gallon, or not per gallon, per month, per user, and not changing the, the structure of the meter size because it's not exactly correlating into how much water people use, to how much sewer they provide, but keeping those flat across every user. And then in the first year, one of the proposals that we're looking at is changing it to seven dollars and fifty cents per customer and that, and adding apartments as a, and giving them each a base charge. Currently, we aren't billing apartments a base charge, they're just getting one base charge per the, per unit. So that's a thousand customers that aren't being billed. They are getting one for water side, but they're not getting one for sewer. So, you know, it's, it, yeah, so that would be adding seven dollars and fifty cents to every one of those water customers or else the apartment owner who owns that building. But I think that's something that he could probably, he or she could probably sustain by adding that either back into the, that they're charging to those, to those residents. So looking at, you know, similar graph in the usage revenue versus operating expenses, you can see there's, there's quite big gaps here in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and what even we're proposing in sixteen. However, you know, those operating expenses are gonna climb and we're not actually going to be increasing the oper, the usage rates as dramatically as we have been asked. We have been increasing them about five percent. And we had been doing the same to the base, however, the base, the deficit is much more extreme. And we need to increase that base at a higher rate than what we had then. So that's why we're looking at either one, scaling up the rates, and that's showing you here. And then this is what the impact that improvement fund would be over time. It takes a dip in the first few years while we still have that debt service that we're paying up. But by year five, those things start, those numbers start stabilizing. And this is including the new debt service at an estimated eleven million dollars. But at the fifteen dollars a month per customer, we're, we're actually right, getting back in line where we need to be to keep those improvement fund balances where they, they should be to help us operate. If, on the other hand, we just said, well, we need fifteen dollars a month to pay for these things, we just moved it directly up to fifteen dollars a month. You see, the improvement balance, fund balance doesn't actually take a dip, it does increase. But, you know, at, over time, when you add in those major project expenses, this number's gonna start coming down. So that is what I have for this presentation. I was going to bring up the same spreadsheet that I showed at our, at our budget meeting. And if there was any other comments that people wanted to make to that at the time, or council wanted to make it for this at the time. This is what we've, we've presented for, for the revenues and expenses for, for the budget. And that includes that seven, one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar number. And this is also in your packets. There is a couple of key notable features in here. In our revenue side, we have been collecting the franchise agreement revenue from Minnesota Power that we have. And that was being applied to the general fund. There was discussion in the, in the budget planning session of helping the golf course and other funds have a designated, designated revenue source to pay off their deficits that they have in improvement funds. The golf course deficit is in the, you know, half million dollar range. What staff has done is taken the recommendation from that meeting, moved the franchise agreement from there and applying that against the, the golf courses deficit so that you get that fund out of the hole. And then hopefully, as time and you operate and do things more effectively, it's going to generate enough revenue to pay for its own, own expenses, at, even build up some surpluses and can handle its own improvements in the future. So that does take away seven, you know, in the past, it's been about seventy-five thousand dollars implied away from the general fund, which, you know, might account for some of that increase, that one percent, or certainly counts for that one percent increase that we're showing forward. In terms of other notable factors, we have new staff that have come on. So there are certain areas that we're seeing some larger salaries and actual regular pay. Try to get down to one, general fund, professional services for city administration and finance being one of them. That includes my salary now, where, you know, in previous years, you weren't fully staffed with this administrator. However, you, we're paying larger costs because the interomes was under contractual services in another fund. So as that one was higher, it's now lower because you're not contracting for that service. So I know police department is another one that has a larger, looks like a larger increase from pre, previous year to future year. That, that's because we've actually now fully staffed, I think two new officers came on to the payroll this year. So, so with their agreed upon increases, you know, we're seeing that going from eight hundred and sixty thousand to eight hundred and fifty thousand. You know, that being said, the bottom line in police is we're keeping that, we're actually lowering that, you know, we're taking that cost salary increase, but the overall operating cost isn't going up beyond the salary increases. And that's another factor that we've been trying to accomplish in our, in our budgeting plan. Another key component was in the main society, we originally received a request. One was initially at a hundred thousand dollars for the main society. We, it was then lowered to sixty thousand dollars for the main society. We presented that at the planning session and it was consensus of the council at the time that that number should be only be at forty thousand dollars for the main society. And they have been informed with what that, that is. In the end, if the main society went away and we had to operate it strictly as a pound, I would feel comfortable in saying that we could operate it as a pound with, within the forty thousand dollar operating cost. You know, we still, there would still be cost to the city to, to maintain those animals and meet the state statutes for, for dogs, especially picking up and holding for five days. I think we could do that within the forty thousand dollar. Hope that said, we still want the main society around, it isn't something that staff is saying, the main society needs to go away. I think it's a valuable resource for our community. We wouldn't wanna see it go, but I think it's fair for us to say, this is what's gonna cost us to provide that service. You know, it's equitable that we're, we're continuing that, so. The other factor here, from what was estimated in the preliminary, the only two funds that we do this for are the street and the public works because with different projects that might be associated with water, sewer projects, snow removal, we might be able to budget staff time away from their originally, original funds. So they get able to take an engineer that's working on a project related to water and then budget some of their staff time away from the general fund into the water fund. So we do plan to have some of those improvements and things going on next year. It's hard to specifically estimate what that's going to be, but it is, we do, it's been common practice, and I'd see that from our preliminary to what the next year, that we did reuse some of those costs in the staff for that. And then finally, with the transfers, this is what we have in a lot of our capital improvement plans or else insurance costs and other things that we have dedicated that we're gonna come out of the general fund and pay for in other funds, transfer out into other funds. The street improvements specifically, you know, in the past we weren't budgeting a whole lot of our street improvements, but now, you know, I think it's certainly, in my mind, I've seen the evidence that shows preventative maintenance in streets, doing seal coating, crack filling, and those things helps extend the life of your asphalt is much more cost effective over the long term than simply letting a street decay and then repaving it all at a later time. So maintaining those street improvements is very important. However, that has another improvement fund, so to speak, just like water and sewer. And there's some buildup revenue in that fund that we probably don't need all of the $290,000 that we had planned to expend. We could probably use some of the past year dollars to help subsidize that cost. So we've lowered that recommendation to $225,000. And then there was a formula calculation that reduces parks a little bit. There's saving some insurance costs in the parks. Does anybody have any questions before we move on? That's the general fund. Now, we have other budgeted funds, the 200s, which are our special revenue funds. This is the HBC, the HRA, which has its own actual levy. So some of these things are directly coming from the general fund. They may have their own revenue sources that are coming outside of taxes, dealt pay for or other governmental things. So really, they're cost neutral. We try to budget everything to a zero in these funds with the planned revenues that they're getting. Parks is probably, is certainly the biggest component, but, so we'll move down to there. And then within parks, there's different, you know, categories of parks. Playground, you know, the skating rinks and other things like that. A major component of their funding, one of them's coming from the franchise fee that's designated from Centerpoint Energy, and the other's coming from the general fund. Almost all of it, or, you know, the remaining balances coming from the general fund. So we'll move into some of the capital improvement costs in our parks. And within the capital improvement plan, we actually have $59,000 for the capital improvements. I believe, and that's up from $52,000 from the year before. And that's included within the budget. Try to find me that one. The zoo is part of that. That break it. So this is transferring out funds from the parks going into their capital improvement fund. We have these other improvement funds, just like the water and sewer and like the seven streets too. So we're actually budgeting out $59,000 towards the capital improvements for the parks. And then finally, in this, there's the airport. Airport's made up of, airport funding comes from the state, comes from the shared county portion, and then our portion. Also has its own revenue sources, you know, generally from fuel and then the reimbursements that we get from the FAA and the state for the different maintenance things. So that's another one that's a cost neutral. We transferring what our dedicated amount is for the joint powers agreement that we have with the county operated airport. Okay, and then 600s, these are what I call enterprise funds. These are the funds that generate their own revenue from user fees or base charges or usage charges like I stated before. Another change to, just in the budgeting process here, we still, we, in the past, have been accounting for customer charges in water just all as one and not separating out what we're making and presenting that in the budget. We can calculate out what those different costs, revenue streams are from the base charges and the usage charges by looking at other reports. But we weren't separating on budget wise. And in this future budget, in future years, we're going to be separating out what we're gonna make in usage revenue versus what we're gonna make in base revenue. And from what the preliminary number is to the change in the staff recommended budget, that's incorporating the rate increases as we presented them previously. So again, you know, our staff costs and operating costs and those things aren't dramatically increasing, and some funds are actually decreasing for, excuse me, for different accounts. However, the major components that are gonna change in water and sewer are gonna come in our capital improvement plans and then the transfers out that we're gonna have to pay for the debt service accounts. So transfer outline includes the transfer out that these enterprise funds are also making back to the general fund. And this helps pay for the administration, you know, utility billing and different things that we have, staff time that we have related to, that are coming out of general fund expenses that really should be coming out of enterprise fund, but, you know, we all work together. So staff, we've calculated out those. They're at $88,000 for this next year. So that's included in the transfer out number. The other component of that is actually the debt service that's required for next year for those ones. So then, in order to, that being said, in order to pay for all the capital improvement plans and maintain this and to get to a zero, we're still gonna subsidize part of the cost of, for water out of the improvement fund at 1.6 million that I had stated earlier. Because as scaling those rates up, we're not getting right to where we need on day one in 2016. You know, we're gonna, it's gonna take some time. And it's, like I said, those are some larger increases for some customers. Some might not even be noticeable, but it is a big change. So then wastewater, I'll move down and show you the same thing. You know, their capital improvement expenses are right now at zero because in order to get the fund to balance even with the rate increases, and this is presenting the rate increase at the 7.50 number. If we move to 15, we'd be able to bring back any improvement, the capital improvement level. But this actually takes out that $88,000 that we had dedicated towards the debt service. So this is, so that we've taken the $88,000 out of the capital improvements, those are getting subsidized out of the improvement fund at $7.50 per customer per month. But it does get us to a point where we can pay the existing debt service that we have towards wastewater and balance the budget. So it does require some subsidies out of the improvement funds to do so. But otherwise, we're scaling those rates up over time. We're gonna get to the point where we're not gonna have to subsidize out of that. So then garbage and sewer, as we discussed a little bit in, or garbage and recycling, excuse me, as we discussed, the rates that we charge to the customers and the rates we charge to haulers, those tend to balance each other out. We're paying haulers out of those charges that we're billing the customers. So they tend to balance themselves out. And then finally, we get to stormwater. Final. It's in that small stormwater fee that every utility adds. Do we have some improvement? Typically, that's some, been some stormwater improvements that we've had to allocate for those. And then we have some staff costs that we allocate to stormwater work. And then we get to the golf course and the revenue, golf course side. As, you know, we talked about in the previous planning meeting for the budget, golf course, golf course is really hard to nail down. This year, we've had, you know, it's a lot, it's tied to the weather this year. We had a great weather year. We had some early golf in the spring. We had extended golf into the fall. We were able to capitalize on that. And really, hopefully, without some major expenses or things coming up in the next few weeks, we're actually gonna get that, that fund's gonna stay neutral. It's gonna pretty much balance itself out. We're not gonna operate at a deficit this year. So that said, we have kind of budget estimated based on what the previous year's examples are. Made some estimate increases in revenue that we saw and hope to capitalize again on next year. Pay includes our new golf course manager. So that salary is incorporated in this budget. And then bottom line, it's not included in this budget because it's gonna go into paying off that deficit in its improvement fund. But we are gonna allocate the franchise fee from Minnesota Power towards that improvement. So that said, I have concluded my presentation of this budget. Are there any changes that you wanna make? The nice thing of this formula, if I do make changes, I can show you what the estimated impact is to the tax rate right away. Okay. Anyone see any changes they wanna? See them black and white? Or are you happy with what we've represented or?
So with what we have on paper, John, that would be a .91.
That would be a .91 increase from last year's tax levy total amount to this year's. So we're gonna collect more, 9.1% more this year in levy, or in revenue from taxes than we are last year. That said, the tax valuation went up, so the tax rate actually goes down, but only for the properties that either had a valuation that stayed the same or were down or increased by less than 9.91%.
And as we have discussed when we gave our proposed levy, we said typically it goes down because we can't raise over what we.
Yes, yes, from the preliminary levy that was set in September, that's the maximum levy amount that you can absolutely generate. So you can't generate more than 4.9% of a levy.
To me, going from 4.99 to .91 is great news for taxpayers. And of course, I understand it's an increase, but we're trying to minimize that. I've seen proposed, not far from near, 25%. And now they're coming in around, they're hoping to get 14%, so.
To drop it 1% or to zero, how much benefit would, how much more cutting would you have to do?
Um, let's see. I'll take a line here. Give me a second, I'll be able to tell you that quickly. I think it's around, actually, it's around $40,000, $40,000, $50,000.
That spread out between all the taxpayers, you know, if we keep it at .91. Not that big a difference.
This isn't function correct, the way I intended it to. Of course, technology always changes when you get on the public. But, yeah, I had this built to actually move things as we made adjustments, but apparently it's not working at this time. So, but in previous runs of what we're looking at, $40,000, $50,000 would be what we need to increase, either expenses or raising revenues that we levy to.
It's about $5 or $7 a person, I mean, I'll hold.
Anyone else? That said, there's another factor that, you know, goes into the overall levy. You don't ever really collect everything in the levy that you set for. You know, you have to only get it, do it for proper taxes, and then eventually some of those don't ever get fully collected. So, you know, we tend to, you need a little bit of a leeway in that levy setting to try to collect everything. So it's kind of budgeted, and some of those wages and other factors in the budget, we're kind of budgeting on that assumption. No further questions?
Everybody's happy? Well, we have, we have meetings in the line of public to think that this, John, sure does. Anyone else?
No, and I don't, and I really don't deserve a lot of this credit for all this work. This is staff, Lori especially, they did most of this stuff long before I got here. You know, I'm just here kind of to give you what it is that's coming from staff. So they really deserve a lot of the credit for the work that's going in the previous things. This takes a lot, it's a long process. It's something that kind of goes on throughout most of the year in coming up with these plans, so. Okay, thank you. So we don't need no action? Right, on the resolution, but not on the public meeting? Okay, any comment from the public, questions or concerns?
I have one comment. I'm disappointed that the bathrooms, to be made fully disabled so that everybody could use the bathrooms, was not accomplished this year, even though this group stated that the money for the bathroom modification was in the 2015 budget. I asked for this back in September of 2013, and still, you can get into City Hall, but not everybody can use the bathroom.
That is still in the capital improvement plan moving forward into 2016, that's correct. So it is included as a budget that I am, in what I was gonna present.
Yeah, it looks a lot better outside as far as fortune building, as far as more concerning kind of staff people, that looks really good.
Yep. Moving on to lettings, resolution 2015-97, award sale of bond, public improvement 373. A doubt, Lori?
Yes, we opened bids this morning for sale of bonds for our 2015 petition projects. We received five bids. The low bid was United Bankers Bank at a rate of 2.48%. We had preliminary discussions where, you know, we thought the interest rate would come in at a 2.76%. So we're about 30 basis points less than what we had anticipated. So the recommendation would be to award the bid to United Bankers Bank at a interest rate of 2.48%.
Quick motion to council.
I'm motioning to approve resolution 2005-7 and award it to Bank, will it?
Okay. Motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Mayor Zelka. So for resolution 2015-97, discussion? Lori, you just got a question, you said we got five days. What was, do you have the range there at all, from what to what?
Yep.
Was low, what was high?
So 2.48, 2.636, 2.683, 2.689, and 2.710.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here in non-resolution color roll?
William.
Yes.
Kirkak.
Yes.
Lildgren.
Yes.
Zelka.
Yes.
Sampler.
Yes.
Gushak.
Yes.
Airport Commission, recommendation credit card system upgrades. Ward, Greg?
Yeah, to give you guys some history of the airport, we currently have a fuel system. Yeah, to give you guys, uh, some history out of the, the, um, airport, uh, we currently have a fuel system out there. We have underground tanks and then we have a fuel dispenser that dispenses fuel to the, to the airplanes as they, as they need it. The only way to purchase fuel is through the, uh, through the dispenser which has a, a credit card reader on it. That credit card reader, um, the manufacturer went out of business in two thousand and eight. And two thousand and twelve is when they stopped supplying technical supports. We've been going, you know, sort of blind, so to speak, uh, without any replacement parts or technical assistance since two thousand and twelve. Um, it's gone down twice this year alone, so we didn't have the ability to sell fuel to airplanes in the event that they, they wanted to, to purchase it. So we're looking at replacing that, uh, that reader, just the, the part that actually charges the, the air, uh, pilots for the, for the fuel. Um, we did request three quotes for the, for the reader. We received those three, but one of them was not in the client, in B is the little chip on the card to minimize theft of, of, uh, of your credit card. Um, so we, we've got two quotes. The lowest was from Oday Equipment in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We also requested a quote from a local contractor to do the, uh, electrical wiring to make sure that, that is, um, wired up properly to make sure that it reads correctly. And that is in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and forty-five, forty-five dollars. Tonight we'd be requesting the council approve, awarding the bids to both of those contractors. There is a sixty forty state grant that's available. Um, and so the, the cities, solid city slash county, local share would come in ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. That would be split fifty fifty with the, with the county because we're a joint partnership there. So tonight we're looking for approval, um, for both of those, those contractors to get the, the credit card reader up and going.
What's motion to the council?
I'll make a motion to approve, a second.
Got a motion by councilman Hanson, second by councilman Knopfler. Any discussion?
Cities portion is about five thousand some dollars, so we'll probably see that back just in sales.
If, if we can sell it?
Yeah.
And the company's got to prove it too, or?
We'll, we'll, we'll call in for their approval.
Prove it.
Since we've been buying salvage parts to repair this, is there any way to sell it all to, to sell salvage parts to somebody else?
Potentially, I don't know that answer.
I'll check into it though.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Pickup and plow, parks, grounds and maintenance. Greg?
This evening we'd be looking at approval to purchase a new pickup and plow for the parks department currently. We have a nineteen ninety-nine Dodge with over a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. Um, we had some issues with that, uh, with that particular pickup. Um, we replaced the front end and it continues to show, um, you know, the signs that we're looking to replace it. It kind of shimmies up in the front there. Um, and so we'd be looking at replacing that one with a, um, a similar model so that we can continue to plow park lots as well as the ice skating rinks and such. Um, it's just gotten to a point where we seem to be fixing that particular piece of equipment more than we're able to use it. So we'd be looking at approval tonight to, uh, to replace that, that pickup and plow with a, with a new one. Uh, we did look on the state bid for a, a new twenty sixteen GMC. The price is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Uh, and the plow will be five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. This was included in the twenty fifteen budget, so we did budget for this, uh, this past year in, in twenty fifteen. And we'd be looking to charge that to the equipment fund.
What's motion to the council?
Is that a three quarter ton?
That's a three quarter ton, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All second.
Got a motion by councilman Gushak, second by councilman Ljungren. To approve the request, discussion?
Hundred fifty thousand on a truck that's been pushing snow is, just did its work.
It's due for a new one.
Yeah.
Has anybody asked, will they sell to the public if you say, hey, I know what the state bid is?
I haven't tried.
I mean, that's a fantastic price for a three quarter ton.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean.
That's just a regular cab, correct?
That, that's actually an extended cab on that one. So it's similar to what the fire sheet has, but not the same as what we have, uh, in the, in the street or in the, uh, engineering department. It does have a little bit of room back there for, uh, for storing some things that you don't want to have wet in, in the box, but it's not a full, full regular or a full extended cab.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Skate improvements?
Ward, silly. One of the things at the wastewater plant that we would like to improve upon is, um, currently we have all of our electrical equipment, our motors and stuffs in the basement of the, of the main building. Um, as well as the other buildings that for whatever reason they put all the electrical motors, equipments down in the basement of all those buildings. Um, there was a situation a couple of years back where one of the, the pipes sprang leak. Fortunately, uh, staff was there and noticed it when there was only about six inches of water, so it didn't, uh, hurt any of the equipment. If that water stood, would have gotten any deeper, it would have caused tremendous amount of, of damage. Tonight we're looking at approval to purchase, um, basically flood switches so if the water gets up high enough, it sends an alarm to, uh, the staff members and the operators to get to the treatment plant, um, so they can fix the problem and shut off so that it doesn't flood, uh, the basement and, uh, create any more damage than, than what's already been done. Tonight we're looking at approval to, uh, go ahead with In Control Blue Lane. Uh, they are the, uh, the electrical guy that we use to do all of our skater, that's the, the controls for the, for the plant. Um, the amount that they accorded us is four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. We will need to have an electrician energize the switch. Um, that cost should be minimal, but, uh, the, the largest portion of it is going to be with In Control so that they can program, uh, the computers to be able to read that, that alarm to, to notify our, our operators.
What's motion to the council?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with this.
Action. Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by mayor Zelka for approval. Any discussion?
Seems kind of funny, they put all electrical stuff in the basement.